Good evening. Thank you all for joining us for this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. It's being called to order on February 18th, 2020, and the time is 6 o'clock. If you will all please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance that's being led tonight by Ishan Sukdambhar, who is a sixth grader at Herschel-Antoine. Ishan?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ishan. And item number three, Superintendent's comments. Dr. Espinosa?
Yes, President Nahara, members of the Board, I would like to wish two individuals a very happy birthday, Ms. Angelica Rodriguez, on the 25th of this month. Happy birthday, Ms. Rodriguez. And Ms. Nahara, her special day is tomorrow, February 19th, so happy birthday, Ms. Nahara.
Thank you.
So two quinceañeras?
Sir, I am 21 years old, thank you very much.
I was going with the quinceañera.
So, happy birthday. Enjoy your special days.
Thank you.
I'd also like to recognize our newest team members to our leadership team, so when I call your name, please stand, a new Assistant Director of Fine Arts, Ms. Candace Prince. Ms. Nina Salis is our new Assistant Principal at Eldorado High School. And Mr. Ryan Marquez, new Assistant Principal at Antoine. Congratulations. I'm sure you all will do a wonderful job in your new positions. Congratulations. Now, we always have a lot of exciting and great events happening in our school district. On February 21st, just around the corner, we will have the Battle of the Blue Bonnets right here in this room. And also, our academic technology showcase will be on February 27th, also in this very room as well. So, we look forward to seeing many, many of our students shine in the area of reading and technology, because these competitions are so, so fun, and they're also, let me tell you, so competitive. So, congratulations. Also, ribbon cutting for our employee, Employee Health Clinic will be on March 4th. It's an exciting day. We have a new Employee Health Clinic for our employees. You know, we value all of our employees in SISD. We have over 6,000 and are very excited to offer them more economical health services via the new clinic. So, it's a huge, a huge thank you to our school board for helping us make this possible for our awesome, awesome employees. That concludes my comments. President Nahara?
Thank you, Dr. Espinosa. And item number four, Board Honors.
Good evening, President Nahara, members of the Board and Superintendent Dr. Espinosa. My name is Daniel Escobar, Chief Communications Officer for the District, and it is my pleasure to introduce tonight's recognitions. If you'll please step down to receive our honorees. First, we will honor students who competed at the 2019-20 UIL Congress State Competition, which promotes, promotes leadership and communication skills through rigorous interaction and debate on issues confronting our democracy. Students drafted legislation, researched the docket of bills and resolutions dealing with the real-world social and political policies. Congratulations to these outstanding students. They are, from America's High School, Ethan Lopez. He is joined by his teacher's sponsor, Irene Gardea. If we can have the two of you, please join our Board and Superintendent for a photo. And just a quick note, that the photos taken by our district photographer, Mr. Largo, will be posted on our district website. There's a camera icon on the bottom right-hand corner of our webpage. That goes to our SmugMug account, and again, these photos will be available for free, high-resolution Congratulations once again. Next, we recognize America's High School students who advanced to the 2019-20 UIL State Cross-Examination Debate Meet, which will be held March 15th to 21st at UT Austin. The UIL State Meet is celebrated as the largest high school debate tournament in the nation. Through the competition, students develop excellent skills in research, critical thinking, organization, persuasion, and communication. Congratulations to Caitlin Azavedo, Next, we will honor TMSISD fine arts students for being named All-State Musicians by the Texas Music Educators Association. All-state is the highest honor a Texas music student can receive. These talented students were selected through a process that began with more than 70,000 students who auditioned for the band, orchestra, choir, or jazz ensembles. Congratulations to SISD's All-State Musicians. From America's High School, Regina Evnandez, and Choir Director Janet McFarlane. Also from America's High School, Ivan Sanchez, and Band Director Henry Vega. From Eastlake High School, Abigail Talavera, Aria Sarri Labarado. Their Choir Director is Liliana Labarado. From Eldorado High School, Robert John Harris. Band Director is Anthony Irigon. Choir Student from Pebble Hills High School, Raúl Romero. From Pebble Hills High School, Angel Santiago Miramontes. Santana Angel Rojas. Juan Ramón Lara. Band Director Leo Casorena. And Maximo Sierra. From Socorro High School, Jesse Hernandez. Andrew Steven Arziniaga. Leading the band, Rebecca Monreal. Can we see everybody?
Ready? One, two, one, two, three.
Keep smiling, looking right down the center. Next, we will recognize three outstanding robotics teams from Clark Middle School, Hernando Middle School, and Campesda Elementary School. These teams competed in one big at the West Texas First LEGO League Regional Championship, which was held at the University of Texas at El Paso. They won first, second, and third place in the championship's awards. These talented robotic students worked hard, displayed professionalism, and exemplary technological skills. They are our third-place winners from Campesda Elementary School. Cadent Miranda. Jude Rodríguez. Trinity Muñoz. Elijah Dominguez. Jasleen Muñoz. Toby Ochoa Rangel. Noemi Gómez. Julín Rangel. Their coaches are Aida Lesa, Alex Lesa, and Elias Rangel. Our second-place winning team from Rafael Hernando Middle School. Sean César. Aliana Cadena. Miley Piñón. Ixel Osoria. Patrick Mendez. Charles Álvarez. Osiel Lozano. Their coach is Roberto Reyes. The first-place winners are from Captain Walter E. Clark Middle School. Asaya Henry. Leila Ávila. Eliana Hammond. Mia Salazar. Alora Ortega. Matthew Garza. Mark Plata. Owen Solorio. Yomede Adenan. José Luján. And they're led by Coach José Antazola. If we can have you all, please return to the front for a photo with our trustees and One step, one step. All right. I think we're good. That's right. Everybody look right at Mr. Largo, right in the center. Keep smiling, looking right at the center. All right. Our next recognition is for another awesome robotics team that advanced and competed at the UIL Robotics State Competition Best Division. The Montwood High School Robotics Team consistently displays outstanding skills in the STEM field, where they are learning to analyze and solve problems with the engineering design process and developing technological literacy skills. Congratulations to the Montwood High School Robotics Team. They are Marco Sanchez, Jesús Hernández, Johan Ramírez, Diego Sanchez, Paris Fitzgerald, Andrew Escagella, Evan Labelle, Jorge Bolivar, John Aguilar, Reyes Mata, Seid Ajo Montano, Connor Martinez, Jasmine Pacheco, Tyler Conwell, Jorge Solís, Ariana Rivera, Valentina Váiz, Victor Vela, Imani Suktankar, Isaiah Villarreal, Kiri González, Janelle Lee Hernández, Magaly Rodríguez. Their teachers are Daniela González For our final recognition, we honor a Socorro High School coach for making an impact on and off the field. And being named the 2019 Assistant Coach of the Year in Class 6A Baseball by the Texas High School Baseball Coaches Association. He is the only Assistant Coach in El Paso to receive this prestigious, prestigious award. Coach Alvarez's team, if you guys can join for this photo, please. One more, one more. Right ahead. Congratulations once again, Coach. And that completes our, completes our recognitions for the evening.
Item number six, Open Forum. We greatly appreciate those individuals who have requested to speak to the Board during open forum or in regard to a specific agenda item. We are bound by certain time constraints in order to cover all the items on the agenda and therefore must limit presentations to five minutes. Please respect the rights of others in your presentation. By law, the Board cannot take action upon or discuss any item which is not posted on tonight's agenda, but we will give all presentations our serious consideration. Thank you, and let's proceed with open forum. We do have one speaker tonight.
First of all, let me say thank you to the Board for allowing me this opportunity. Dr. Espinosa, I want to start out by saying that I believe every individual has a right to protect themselves. I believe that we all feel like we have a right to protect our person, our family, and our property. Well, on December 5th, my daughter was working in official capacity as a teacher's assistant at Eldorado High School. She is an AP Dual-Credit Taffy student with, at the moment, $622,000 in academic scholarship offers at various schools. Thank you. During this time, as a teacher's assistant, there was a child in the classroom that was being unruly. The teacher had asked him to put his cellphone away several times. He was watching Family Guy, instead of paying attention to the presentations and the instruction of the teacher. So, after multiple attempts, my daughter went over and approached the student, and she asked him what, what his name was. And his response to her was, "Who the fuck are you?" That's what he said to my daughter. So, my daughter walked off, she went back up to the front. He continued to look at his phone, he started showing other students what was going on, what he was watching. He started talking very negatively about Eldorado High School and about the teacher that was in the classroom. My daughter went back over, she took the cellphone, and she put it on the teacher's desk. When that occurred, the student got up, he approached her in an aggressive manner and got in her personal space. She put her hand up to protect herself. He assaulted her by all intents and purposes, because he placed his hand on her chest and he pushed her back. At that time, my daughter pushed him as well. Later on that day, they were in the cafeteria. This same boy, after he verbally assaulted my daughter in class, calling her all types of derogatory names, he called her a bitch, he called her a nigger, called her a dyke. When she was in the cafeteria, he saw her again, and he said, "Oh, there's that bitch who took my phone." And my daughter responded back negatively, and she said, "Well, there's that whore whose phone I took." And she, she stopped talking. He continued, he called her those same derogatory, bullying, harassing, degrading names. No one interceded, except for her little brother. Her little brother heard the names, and he looked at her face and saw how hurt she was, and he approached this aggressor, and he said, "Leave my sister alone, stop talking to her." Now, when he did that, there were several adults in authoritative capacity within that cafeteria who did nothing before my son. This boy got up, he pushed my son and reached for my daughter. When he reached for my daughter, my daughter, or my son, pushed him, and they all fell to the ground. A fight ensued. My, my son was separated. My daughter, while she was restrained by SISD police, was punched in the face by this boy. But yet, my two kids were charged with assault, class, causing bodily injury. But yet, my two kids were charged with assault, class, uh, causing bodily injury. They were suspended for three days, they were placed in SAC initially for three days. This young man was sent home, and that was basically it. I don't understand how this happened. So of course, we went through the appeal process. We were at the first level appeal, appeal with Ms. Betancourt, the principal, where we were lied to, we were laughed at while we were waiting to speak with her, and we were basically put off. It wasn't until Ms. Macias interjected that we were able to meet with Ms. Betancourt. So during this meeting, Ms. Betancourt told my daughter that she did not successfully express that she was assaulted in class. And so that's why they had not looked into it, they didn't do any type of investigation. So basically, she blamed the victim. She told my daughter, um, when the incident first happened, that it didn't look good for her. Mr. Fernandez, which is the AP, he racially profiled my son. He told, he told me personally that my son approached this young man in an aggressive manner. So I'm assuming that he has some type of education that credits him with the ability to, to read a person's bodily disposition. I don't think so. The next thing is, we went ahead and we went through the appeal process, we did not allow them to send the kids to keys, that's why we appealed. So all the time that we were going through these appeals, my, my kids were in SAC, being denied their constitutional right of that classroom instruction. My daughter's grades dropped, her position in her classroom standing dropped, and nobody did anything until Ms. Macias interceded. In addition to that, there was a day that my daughter was in SAC, she was denied the opportunity to go to the restroom. And she was told that Ms. Betancourt had instructed the teacher not to let her out. All of these things are just a portion of the hurt and the inconvenience and the disrespect that was shown towards my kids. We finally did receive a decision at the Level 3 hearing, which we just had last week, I believe, we just received it yesterday. It did say in, in part that it, they upheld the previous decision to send my children to keys. However, since they were time served, no further action was to be taken against them. I find that language to be deplorable. The, the wording "time served," I am a 23-year veteran of the Sheriff's Department. That, that, that word, or those words "time served," we use that when we're discussing criminals in the jail that have served their sentence. My children are not criminals, they did not deserve the treatment that they received, they were disrespected, they were not protected. My daughter was not protected, my son was not protected, and we still have to fight criminal charges. We had to get an attorney, we had investigators, and then we had two District Attorney opponents, if you will, that came in with us to the Level 3 hearing. And it was only at that point that we received some semblance of justice. I don't find this acceptable at all. So again, Dr. Espinoza, I direct this to you directly and the board as well, as I stated at the opening. Everyone has a right to, to defend themselves. My children were not afforded that right. Ms. Blam, at the third appeal, she asked my daughter if she thought that her behavior was in line with someone becoming, you know, a teacher, which I found to be insulting. My daughter is 18 now, she was 17 when this happened. She has $622,000 worth of academic scholarship offers, and I don't feel like that was appropriate. So again, I address the board and say, isn't leadership supposed to start from the top? Are we not supposed to set the example, lead by example? And then if everybody is afforded the opportunity to protect themselves, why were my kids denied? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Covington. Item number seven, district reports, a facilities report, Mr. Eington.
Good evening, President Nara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Today, I want to talk to you about the 2017 bond. It's a little bit different type of presentation than what you have seen in the past. You do have some fact sheets in your board book. I will not be referring to those per se, but I will be addressing a short PowerPoint presentation that has to do with the bond. Everybody's aware, back in 2017 November, we passed a $448 million bond program. We are just now starting our third year, it's a little over two years. And we have got a lot of work under construction and a couple of are going to be presented tonight for board approval. So things are moving real well with the bond on schedule, but there is some impacts. Cost impacts and stuff that I want to verbalize to you tonight. And I've got some examples and some slides to show that. First of all, last month, you approved selling the remainder $98.5 million. That was not scheduled to be sold until the summer, this summer, 2020. Y'all moved that up and approved that in January. So as soon as those bonds are sold, we will have the total $448 million, less what we've already spent to date. So all of our projects will be funded by these sales of the bond. And basically, this has gone by what we had outlined during the presentations during the bond program. The next slide is, some of y'all have seen this before. This is just a listing of all the 2017 bond projects. What have been, what has been awarded and to what architect, professional services, firms, and contractors are seeing them at risk. And as you can see, we have basically awarded everything with the exception of four, four projects. That would be the two remaining light sports lighting projects for Eastlake and Pebble Hills, which were funded under the $98.5 million bond sale. So we have that money and we will begin to work on hiring consultants to do that project. The other two projects are the transportation project, which is a canopy for our transportation workers and the maintenance and, uh, maintenance facility, warehouse facility. Those are the only projects that have not been awarded under the 2017 bond program. This next slide might be a little confusing, but it basically shows you from 2003 to 2020, roughly a 17-year span. It shows the cost of construction as it has occurred over that 17-year period. I came in 2003. The center portion of it, where you see the purple, orange, and red lines are a study that I got from the Texas Coalition of Fast Growth School District. And that is the average cost of construction for elementary schools, middle schools, and high school throughout the state. The green, the green bar is what Socorro has done over that 17-year period. As you can see, back in 2003, we were under $100 a square foot, somewhere around 75. And you can see in 2019, we're up to almost $300 a square foot. And I'll explain that a little bit later. But you can see that our low point in, in the construction was, or not our low point, our best project that came in was Purple Heart. It came in at $140 a square foot. And now we're looking at $240 to $270 a square foot in a matter of a few years. I show you this because there is a lot of work going on. And back in March, March 28th of last year, 2019, most of the board was present at that board workshop. The three new board members were not. And we had a presentation that basically, that I outlined, that, you know, cost are going up. We would never see a dollar, 40, uh, $140 a square foot for an elementary school, probably again, because of just economy and inflation and everything else. But during that time, we were, we were the only game out there, so to speak. Socorro ISD was the only district that was doing work. So we were very fortunate to do a lot of our work. And you can see the stars at the bottom. We had a bond sale in 2004 of 188.68 million. Then we had a bond in 2011 of 297.4 million. And then of course, in 17, we had the 448.5. You add all those up and it comes to a little over $900 million worth of bonds that we have done in that period of time. A little bit about the growth of the district back in 2003. The enrollment was a little over 32,000. On February the 10th of this year, we were at 47,576. That's 15,000 students over a period of 17 years. You know, that's, I don't know what percentage is, I think it works out to be about an average of about 3% over those 17 years, a year growth. I say all this because the next slide, we're going to get into our 2017 bond. And I'm going to give you some good news, bad news scenario. And it's not all bad. It's, in fact, it's pretty good in some cases, if you consider. I mentioned the 2019 Board Workshop, uh, back in March, March the 28th. We presented to the board at that time, Socorro High School. We presented three options to the board at that time. And the three options were basically, one was to how we could get it within the budget. Because we knew the budget was a little pressing for that particular project, and we gave you three options. The direction or the consensus at that time was to, we weren't going to cut anything. We were going to go ahead and, and do the project and, and fund it if we had to with general funds. And your directive to me was to try to save as much money as possible on the other project. In doing so, we were able to do that. This is how the bond was broken up. $135 million for Socorro High School. Now, that's not construction cost, that's the total cost. That includes the soft cost. Soft cost is the fees, architectural engineering fees, fixture, furniture, and equipment, and land cost. Each one of those numbers on the right-hand side of the screen are inclusive of the soft cost. So with $135 million, there was roughly about $100 million assigned for the construction. To date, we have awarded $151,464,294 for the construction of Socorro High School. That is, simple math, take $100 million off of that, we're $51 million over. However, through reductions of some fees, looking at the fixture, furniture, and equipment, and the sale of the land, we've made, we, we, we had some savings on the land. And we think currently, as the project stands, there is probably about a $6 million buyout in savings. So with all that added in, we are down to 32 million, roughly $20 million less. And we're still working on it. That's the semi-bad news, if you want to consider that bad news. If I go down the rest of the projects, going down to the bottom of the page, Mottwood, we're similar. That includes all the soft cost. We're about, with approved guarantee maximum prices, we're about $100,000 under. El Dorado, we're about $300,000 under. These are rough, raw numbers because we're still working on it. Tonight, we're going to present Americas High School. Americas High School will be a little bit over budget, but we hadn't had the opportunity to have it approved by the board and then go out on the streets and get the numbers.
Mr. Cundet.
Mr. Eington, I had a, me and Mr. Menno were talking earlier. And he said, anything that's missing for El, I mean for Americas and Socorro, he can take it from Mottwood.
Negative. Okay, okay.
Mr. Menno woke up real quick.
We are, we are also going to look at, or the board is going to look at, I'm going to make a presentation on the second package for the auxiliary gym. We don't know where we stand there, but each package has been a little bit over budget. But there's, all of these projects, and I'll speak to that a little bit, have contingencies in it. You know, if we don't spend the contingency, that money comes back. So we will be presenting you package number two on the auxiliary gym. Cactus Trails. Cactus Trail is completed. We will be getting a little over $1.1 million back on that. However, that project was over because we did not, when the bond was put together, we did not have 10 pre-K classrooms in there. So that cost kind of put it over the budget. We needed the 10 pre-K classroom as a hub, but we made up as much as we could. Support Services, the little building outside that you see under construction. I call it something else, but I won't call it that publicly, but that's Mr. Reyna's building. It's, it's a little over, over budget, but it's, it's moving and there are some savings that we are saving. That's a, will be received when we, you know, look at contingencies and stuff. That contract is a competitive sale proposal, so we don't really get the negotiation out of a construction manager at risk. The other projects that are in design are the support services, I mean, excuse me, the SAC. And the SAC, you've seen the presentations on that, the two fields, they're going to be outstanding. We have preliminary estimates of anywhere from on the low range of $48 million to the upper range of $55 million. We have about $40 million in there, in the hard numbers, the building. However, we've got about $10 million, over $10 million in land saving. So if that money could be, you know, earmarked for construction, we could be pretty much on, online as far as the SAC goes. The Sports Lighting, as I told you, we have two projects left. We have about $1.9 million for those two projects. They are running about $800,000 plus or minus each. So I don't, I don't have a concern on the remaining two Pebble Hills and Eastlake as far as the sports lighting go. In fact, uh, Eastlake, not Eastlake, Americas Baseball Softball is complete, two days above, ahead of what we said it would be. We said February the 20th. Now, they're still out there working, they're, we kind of rutted up the baseball field a little bit because we had a couple of snow days. Picture that, we're in the desert and we have snow. You know, so we're, we're working on that, but we just got to tweak the system. So we said it would be ready by February the 20th. We are working with the administration as far as completing, you know, their schedule of using the sports plexes and stuff. The new middle school, we combined those two projects. The new middle school, we combined those two projects. One, we combined them, we saved money on both architectural fees and on land. Uh, so there's some roughly six million dollars in there that could be converted into construction costs, because you saw how the cost of construction has gone up. And I'll make a comparison with our neighboring district. I don't like to do it, but this one I like, I'll do, because I think y'all will be surprised. And then, of course, the maintenance, uh, warehouse facility and transportation are the other two. If you put all of the pluses and minuses together, like I said, we're thirty-nine million in the black, or in the whole, so to speak, not in the black.
Big difference.
In the red. Uh, however, if you take Socorro High School out of the equation, we're seven million dollars. I mean, we're right online. Uh, I'm not blaming Socorro or anything like that, uh, but I will tell you, Socorro High School, uh, I know that there probably will be in question, it, Socorro High School is running about two hundred and eighty-five dollars a square foot to build. Our neighboring district, three years ago, built a high school, Eastwood, I believe, for two seventy-four. If you take the projected six million dollars in savings out, which I feel like that number's gonna climb, it's at two seventy-four. Three years later, I think that's a heck of a price nowadays in the construction market in El Paso. We also have about seven point six million in round numbers in contingency in, in the projects that are already out for bid. Normally, we get almost a hundred percent of that back, uh, if, if not a hundred percent back. So that would reduce the number down. So basically, you know, we started out with Socorro at fifty-one million, now we're down to thirty-one million, uh, you know, and we're still working on that number. Uh, I think, uh, everything is moving well, uh, the construction prices have gone up. Uh, in that meeting back in, uh, March, I said it wasn't the general contractors that could, you know, they could do the work. It's the, uh, economy as far as the population and the size of the, our subcontractors. Our subcontractors are, are doing so much on the various projects.
Excuse me, Mr. Arrington, how much money would we save at Socorro High School if we took out the basketball courts?
Two hundred. Two hundred and twenty, two hundred and twenty thousand.
Got your ball. Gary. Or the handball courts.
Or the handball.
I don't know how you're back on that one.
I, you know, I didn't know, you know, this was supposed to have been presented to you, uh, last Tuesday night. However, we had the, the inclement weather day, and unfortunately, I will not be here next week for the, uh, the workshop, so the superintendent had asked me to kinda update you on this. But, you know, our, our construction prices have, uh, unfortunately caught up with the state economy, uh, because a, a lot of things are going on. Uh, and talking to the contractors, I had one in my office today, and he said, we still would prefer working for Socorro than any other district, uh, you know, because, uh, you know, it's just that the other districts, uh, are managed by outside entities and, and program managers and stuff, and, and they would prefer working with us. I think the next couple of projects, we're gonna catch it in a situation where they'll be in a little low. We bid, uh, the two hundred and ninety-five dollars a square foot cost was the auxiliary gyms, believe it or not. Forty-two hundred square feet, square building, rectangular, two hundred and ninety-five dollars. I would've never expected that to go two hundred and ninety-five dollars a square foot. Six weeks later, we bid package two, which I'm gonna present to the board tonight, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. So we're already dropping. You know, hopefully, package three will drop more, but we won't know that until we hit the streets, so. That's my good news, bad news. Any questions?
Mr. Cundet, you don't have a question?
Basketball courts are gonna be nice.
No, they're actually working on the, the, the base out there.
I know, I know, Mr. Arrington, I know that it's, it's been tough with this, uh, this bond, because it's, you know, we kinda knew it was gonna go up, that's just the way the world works. But you've done a wonderful job, and we really appreciate everything that you've done so far, and just, you know, make, you know, you're, you know, you always make magic somehow, and so.
We'll, we'll continue to work, and, and thank you for the confidence, but, uh, our, my department is very dedicated, and we'll continue to work and, and work with our CMs and our contractors to see what we can, uh, do to, uh, you know, even bring the cost down lower. We are in design on a couple of the facilities, so we still have time to, uh, you know, look at some of the design and stuff.
Mr. Arrington, how much money would we save if we made Mottwood an amphitheater instead of an enclosed theater?
Okay. Are there any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Arrington, for the update.
Thank you.
Item seven B, Socorro ISD Early Education Expansion for two thousand and twenty, dash, two thousand and twenty-one. Ms. Zapata?
Yes. Good evening, President Nahada, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board. I'm here tonight to give an update on our early education expansion for two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one. First, though, I'd like to give a brief overview of House Bill three as it pertains to pre-K. And as many of us know, House Bill three was passed by our legislature, uh, in June of two thousand and nineteen to be implemented this year in all of school districts. So a couple of the requirements that House Bill three has is, it requires districts to provide full-day pre-K to all eligible four-year-old students. It requires districts to provide half-day pre-K to ineligible four-year-old students. And if districts aren't able to meet these requirements, they can apply for a waiver, but before doing so, they must solicit or consider partnerships with high-quality childcare providers or Head Start. So our district is currently, we are currently in this solicitation process, and once we review these proposals, then we will be updating the board, uh, on this. So I wanna give you also what we've accomplished this year, because we've accomplished quite a bit. We have increased our full-day sections. When this came out, all of us came together as a team, and we worked diligently. And we increased our full-day sections from thirty-three to sixty. In fact, we're serving right now about twelve hundred and ninety-eight students, pre-K students, full day in our schools. That's five hundred and seventy-two additional students than last year. So we're proud of that, and our, you can see the growth that they have. Um, our current pre-K enrollment, including our pre-K collapse, is about twenty-two fifty, and that's as of early February. We have about three hundred two ineligible students, ninety-one of those families pay tuition to us. We also were able to add two full-day sections at Butler, and we are serving about forty-two students, so we're happy. We were able to, to add two full-day sections at Butler. Uh, with this, all of this, we added thirteen FTEs for teachers, thirteen FTEs for pre-K support specialists, and then another sev, seven FTEs for pre-K monitors. So that's what we were able to accomplish. This next chart shows, uh, some of the data that we look at, and we update regularly. So when we update and we meet, we look at our enrollment numbers, we look at, um, our FTEs, um, how many seats available, and we use all of this as we are planning. So that was just to give you a, a little viewpoint of that. So where are we headed? So for our early education expansion for two thousand and twenty-one, we, as a team, we came together, and we are going to provide universal pre-K to all. So we have the capacity to increase our full-day sections from sixty to one hundred eleven. That will decrease our half-day sections, will go down from twenty-two to zero. That means we will be able to provide free pre-K to all students. We'll do this because all of our elementaries and pre-K eight schools will have pre-K classes except for, with the exception of Lujan Chavez and Ernesto Serna. So with the assistance of our administrative services, Ms. Macias, we found that we have the capacity to, to serve about twenty-four hundred students in full-day programs. Uh, we will continue with pre-K hubs, uh, in our district, and we're even going to add a three-year-old half-day program for eligible students. So we're very excited about that at, at some selected campuses. So this just shows our pre-K hubs. So we'll have Rojas, which will assist Ernesto Serna. Loma Verde in Sierra Vista will assist Dr. Su Shook. Dr. Su Shook will have pre-K, it will be for our dual-language, uh, students. And then Sergeant Roberto Itorte will be the pre-K hub for Lujan Chavez. And then our three-year-old programs for half-day will be at O'Shea Kelleher and Escondrias Early Childhood Center. So as we looked at this, these are just a few of the benefits for our students in our schools. We looked at everything, and we are excited, because we feel that many of our students will be able to acclimate in their home campus earlier, um, and this will help to reduce the early learning achievement gap. We've looked at our building capacities, we've taken those into account. We believe that more of our families with siblings can be accommodated, they'll be together in one place, in one school. And then also, it will create an alignment for academics and social character learning for our students. So for the fourth year in a row, we will have our Saturday, uh, registration for our full-day pre-K, our new kinder, and our new three-year-old half-day program. Again, it was a, it's a team effort. Our technology department and our admin services have come up. Our parents actually will have an on, an opportunity to preregister online and actually set a time that they'll be able to walk in on Saturday, and they can complete the registration process, so they can actually start the registration process online and then come in on that Saturday. So we're excited about that, and then our PR department has done this for us.
Did you know SISD offers free full-day pre-K for all four-year-olds?
And a free half-day program for qualifying three-year-olds.
This is a great way for young students to seize their opportunity in Team SISD.
Registration date is April four, but parents can go online to set their appointment starting in March four.
For more information, visit sisd.net.
Team SISD is the right choice for endless opportunities.
So it is definitely a team effort. We are excited about that, about this. We will continue to look at numbers, we'll continue to work to best serve our students, our parents, our schools, and ensure that we are meeting the requirements as best as we can for HB three. Any questions?
Are there any questions?
President Nahada?
Yes, Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you all so much for the work that you've done on this. I think, I mean, truly what an opportunity it is for our students. I know in, in looking at what our little ones are doing, I just think the opportunity for them to be in a full-day pre-kinder program, and then the three-year-old program, I think it's amazing, so I'm very excited about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President Nahada? Yes, I wanna thank, uh, Ms. Battha, you know, Mr. Reyna, is, everyone who has made this possible, the big day, as you saw on the slide, is on that Saturday, and we are making it even more simpler, trying to make it more simpler for our parents. We did it last year, we did it several years, we always want to improve. And again, as, uh, I go with, uh, Mr. Rodriguez said, and it's about having those students early, setting a strong, strong foundation so that they can continue to excel, not only next year, but years beyond. So, uh, it's an amazing time, you know, for, for our school district, so thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Ms. Zapata. Item eight, consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled?
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Gata. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item nine, new business, A, consider approval of notice of separation incentive. Mr. Campoya.
Good evening, President Nahada, Dr. Espinoza, board members. Rudy Campoya, Chief Human Resources Officer for the school district. I'm here requesting your approval for the district to offer a separation incentive for classroom teachers, administrators, or any other professional exempt staff assigned to a school site who plan to voluntarily resign their position with Intimacy at the end of this school year, nineteen twenty. We will offer an incentive of five hundred dollars for the first seventy-five employees in the categories that I just mentioned, who submit their written notice of separation on or before Friday, March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. With your approval, the notice will be sent to employees tomorrow, and the financial impact for the budget for the district would be a total of thirty-seven thousand, five hundred, should all seventy-five employees submit or take advantage of this opportunity. This, as in previous years, has helped us with staffing our schools and be prepared for the new school year. At this time, administration recommends your approval of the request that's presented, and I can answer any questions.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gata and a second by Ms. Rodriguez. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Campoya. Item nine B, consider approval of guaranteed maximum price for the remaining improvements at Amadeus High School from Bain's General Contra, General Contractors. Mr. Arrington.
Yes, good evening. Again, I'm back. Okay, on, in your book, on page, uh, two seventy-one is the board agenda for the Americas High School remaining improvements. Uh, the administration, uh, back, or, or the board back in, uh, March twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, a little, not quite a year ago, awarded this project to America, to Bain's General Contractors at the CM at risk. Uh, tonight, we'll be presenting the, uh, guaranteed maximum price for the remaining portion, but before we do that, I wanna, uh, show you that basically, uh, this is some of the improvements that are gonna be happening. The, the new entrances to the fine arts and the upgrades to the fine arts, uh, in the various areas, the band hall, percussion and ensemble rooms, choir and the orchestra rooms, uh, we'll have CTE upgrades, we'll, we'll add culinary arts, uh, and some serving lines, classrooms and a serving line. We'll do automotive classroom, electrical and welding classrooms. We'll also, uh, do some upgrades to the special education area for the, uh, ILC and the FLS, and then cafeteria upgrades, uh, along with additional serving lines and additional seating. Uh, and then we'll have academic, uh, upgrades, uh, for the, uh, science labs and remodel some additional science lab. The next area basically shows you everything, but tonight, we're gonna, uh, I'm gonna present the guaranteed maximum price for the, uh, base bid, which is basically the, the large area up on, uh, my left-hand side, and then the, uh, kinda in the center area where it says CTE and the science lab. The other areas, if they have alternates beside them, we're gonna bid them as alternate. So with that in mind, uh, administration recommends the approval of the guaranteed maximum price presented by Bain's General Contractor in the amount of twenty-one million, eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars for the remaining improvements at Americas High School. Upon, with the approval of the board tonight, if the board decides to approve, this will give the, uh, allow, uh, facility and planning to work with, uh, in conjunction with, to work in conjunction with purchasing department to start bidding this project out, and that's where we'll see where some savings will come in. Uh, Mr. Blanco has, uh, looked at some of the preliminary, uh, amendments to this. We will finalize those amendments for board signatures pending approval. Administration recommends a Uh, administration recommends approval uh as presented in the amount of twenty-one million eight-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand eight-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars.
Motion to approve? Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gandera and a second by Mr. Gata. Is there any further discussion?
President Nahada?
Ms. Rodriguez.
Mr. Ayington, I, I'm sorry. Tell me again, this includes for the twenty-one million eight-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand eight-hundred-and-ninety-seven um guaranteed maximum price. Tell me again, what, what areas does that include?
That's, it includes the fine arts. If you go uh to that first page, that's, that's a synopsis. I mean, it's a lengthy thing. I didn't put repaint.
No, no, no. I understand that. Can I go, can you, uh, can we go back to the map?
The plan?
So it would be the fine arts area.
The fine arts area.
Uh-huh.
And then towards the center of the plan, do you see where it says CTE area?
Uh-huh.
CTE area?
Right.
And the science lab addition?
Uh-huh.
Those two areas. That's in the base bid. Everything else around there is alternates, which will be bid out, but we're not aware of those tonight. We're gonna see what the numbers are. If they come in, we'll bring back to the board.
So this does not include the other areas?
No, ma'am.
And this, Mr. Ayington, this was all part of the original improvements for America's High School?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, can you explain to me, we're doing this as a second step because these are remaining improvements?
Yeah, the, the first phase was the sports lighting, which is already amendment number one was sports lighting. We started that project and then continued to work on phase two, which is the remaining improvements.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
But this is it?
Yes. Unless we can come up with some savings and do the alternates.
President Nahada, I'm sorry. I, I'm still not understanding. I don't know, maybe it's just fuzzy brain. But the food service, the classroom additions, uh, those alts. Alt one, okay, I'm seeing alt one, alt two. Alt three is a science lab addition. Alt four is a classroom addition, and alt five is science lab, correct?
Yes.
So we're just looking at fine arts area, CTE area, and science lab addition for twenty, almost twenty-two million dollars.
That's what was left in the original bond amount. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item nine C, consider approval of package two of the auxiliary gyms for Horizon Heights, Loma Verde, Myrtle Cooper, Sierra Vista, Vista del Sol Elementary. Mr. Ayington.
Yes, on page two-seventy-six, y'all have seen these uh renderings of what the facilities are gonna look like. Of course, they will be job-specific with materials to match the existing schools. And uh, and this is just the uh architect's rendition of what, what the entry of the auxiliary gym would look like. And of course, this is the floor plan. Uh, and this is what was awarded in the original package. Administration is recommending that we award the next five projects, Horizon Heights, Loma Verde, Myrtle Cooper, Sierra Vista, and Vista del Sol to Metlock General Contractors in the amount of six million sixty-five thousand six-hundred-and-nineteen dollars. It will take two-hundred-and-forty days to build all five of them. So they will be completed within the original timeline, which was December twenty-twenty. Uh, this project did come in less than the original package, and there was an actually, there was six uh uh gyms in the first package. So this is less square footage, and it actually came in less than the first package did. Of course, we bid it about six weeks later, and we uh, we got the price in on that. So administration recommends approval.
Motion to approve?
I've got a couple of questions for you.
Okay, if you will. Mr. Morales, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gandera and a second by Mr. Gata. Is there any further discussion, Mr. Morales?
Yes, I have. I have something to talk about here. First of all, Mr. Ayington, uh initially, I was gonna ask you this question. Uh, these multipurpose facilities, they were originally, uh, the purpose of those were for P E and health instruction with restrooms. Initially, that's what the, the, some of the taxpayers were told. Also, uh, among these, with, within these five campuses, these five schools, are you aware that the most, they're probably some of the, in fact, I think they're the oldest campuses or schools in the entire district? With, I believe, Vista del Sol, thirty-seven years old, Myrtle Cooper, thirty-three years old, Horizon Heights, thirty-seven years old, and Sierra Vista, twenty-seven year old, twenty-seven years uh old. Uh, one of the things I'm concerned about is the fact that we're moving forward with these multipurpose facilities, and in, in certain cases, some of our older campuses are, are lacking those restroom facilities. For example, at Horizon Heights, there are eight portables uh that are gonna be, uh, that are now sharing one restroom off, off their wing in the playground area. And you're proposing to have another multipurpose facility outside of that area, where you'd be having nowhere for the children to use the restroom. Last, in last month's meeting, you mentioned the fact that you did some type of study that, that uh, I guess reflected the fact that uh these uh, the, these particular facilities are adequate with restrooms. I, I, I believe that the fact is that a lot of these campuses are so old and been outdated. I don't believe that we're adequate, adequately uh in, I guess, uh compliance with the, the restrooms for that amount of students in various campuses. So what I'm saying is that I really think that at this point, it's, it's, it's like, uh, one size does not fit all. I mean, as far as students, as we as educators, we know that we don't teach all our students in the same manner. Uh, we, we have particular teaching strategies that we use, and, and so therefore, we, we differentiate teaching for all our students. In this case, we're, we're looking at all these facilities to be the same when all the campuses and all these schools have different needs. So what I'm saying is I really would like to hold off. I want to make a motion if I can.
No, sir. I already have a motion. I already have a motion now. Uh.
Well, I would like to, I would like to find a way. President Nahada, can I address some of his concerns?
Yes, sir.
Because I think there's some inaccuracy, with all due respect. First of all, restrooms were never included in the facility. You can go back and look at tapes, and you can look at me presenting. We never include restrooms in these facility. Second of all, the same students that are in the portable are gonna be using this facility. They're not increasing, we're not increasing student capacity just because we're building this facility. We're serving the same people, and I'm very aware of the ages of all the schools.
You've read on record that you had said that you, you told individuals that you were gonna propose to have restrooms initially. You're on record with that.
I never did. I never did. I beg to differ.
Okay. We have a motion. Uh.
Mrs. Nagara?
Mr. Gata?
You know, listen to Mr. Morales and truth about it is that, I mean, I would love to have restrooms in all of them. I really would. I mean, I would, especially at our older schools, and I think that's one of the concerns that we were, that we talked about the last time, right, Mr. Ayington? The last time we were up here, that a lot of these older schools, because when they were built, they were kindergarten through eight, back in the day. You know, that's what, that's what they were. And so a lot of those, now they're, uh, the older schools are now pre-k's. So a lot of the facilities, like the cafeteria, um, which were before, which, they have locker rooms, became storage units. Kind of, and I think that's where we need to make those changes, where we need to, since you're building this, and that's what, basically what it is, is right, is also for storage as well, right?
Yeah, and, and those restrooms.
And I think that's what we needed. I think that's what Mr. Morales really wants to do is make those facilities useful again. So we have those restrooms in like in the cafeteria, because like you said, they've, they've been, they're closed, where basically they're just storage units now.
And that's what I stated last night. There's, there's four schools that we are going in. Administration, for every reason, you know, did away with those facilities.
Well, it's just they weren't useful anymore because we didn't have those teams anymore. You know, all the teams went to the middle schools, and so basically that's all they became were uh just storage units. So I think if we go back in there and, you know, uh, refurnish them and get them to be used as what they were, you know, not use them as locker rooms or maybe use them for the coaches or whatever, and, but, you know, the, the restrooms uh put back in for our students, I think that's something that would help out. And I know, being Mr. Morales, it's, it's, I would love to say that, but as we're seeing right now, with the problems that we're having with the money, it would just, we'd end up probably not even making them. And I think that's something like maybe in the next one, build them, and probably in the next one, put that in to add restrooms to, to get them to, you know, to, to help out with that area. And like I said, Mr. Morales is very passionate, and, and that's, that's what I love about new board members, you know, this is what we need. We needed that passion again a little bit, and um, but just the truth matter of it is, it would just be really, really costly right now. Really, really costly.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I do. So David, what exactly are you asking for? Like? I'm asking that we reconsider the fact that we should do a study and check to see why we're in such a hurry to get this approved. For the reason that we, uh, we're looking to, to meet all these deadlines, and we're, we're, sometimes I think we take, we, we lose the fact, we lose the uh, maybe sometimes uh, the idea that our children should be coming first. And in many cases, like I said before, a lot of camp, all the campuses are unique, and they have different needs. And therefore, in, in this particular case, I know Mr. Gandera has mentioned those, those facilities that do have those extra storage. But out there, if you go, if you did have a chance to get out there and look at those eight units, those eight portables, and, and in fact, that's here at Horizon Heights, you would notice that those children are sharing one restroom off, off one wing, and if we go ahead and do build it, I'm gonna go on record in saying this, I think we're doing an injustice to these children and to this school. And I, I believe in some of these other schools, they have the same problems. And so that, I'm gonna go on record and say that. I'm not, I'm not gonna approve. So rather than allocate money towards this, you want restrooms? Does that? It, I mean, in particular, yeah, we did that, uh, if we look back and we look to see which ones would, would need those or would have the adequate, then yes, yes, it would be on, just certain, certain campuses, certain facilities would need those. If, if, and I, I was wanting to see if we can do a study, conduct a study that enable us to look into it, to see if, if that is, if that's a fact and what you had said previously.
Like I said, I apologize, Mr. Morales, it's this, we had one of those issues a while back, where we did some things for some schools, and it, I don't want you to turn it, but it bid us, you know, where, because we, what we did there, we had to do to everybody else. And that's kind of the rule. Uh, what we do for one, we have to do for the rest. And I wish you were, I mean, I know at the time you weren't, you weren't here at the time, because it was a couple of years back. And that was one of those hard lessons that we all had to learn the hard way, because it, it cost us some money. It really did. It cost us some money because we had to build these facilities for every high school. It, it had to do with the high school, and it, and we had to build all these same facilities for all our high schools because of, uh, I'll give you an example, the reason it was that we ended up letting a certain individual that was donating to one school, and we were with it, you know, thank, thank people like that that decided to donate to our district, we, you know, we'll gladly take your money, thank you, we appreciate that. But it opened the can of worms for us, because we, what was let built, now we had to build at all our high schools. So it's kind of one of those things that we have to, what we do to one, and like I said, you got individuals that represent districts. You're gonna have that, well, why'd you build it at that school and not at your school? And then you're gonna have, starting myself, you know, and my constituents come and say, you know, hey, you built this at, at a grade school on, you know, on the upper attic. Why not here? And so, well, then, then I'm gonna have to say, well, yeah, you know, I wanted it built here. So it's, it's gonna get into one of those things, but I honestly, I'm telling you, it's something that we can keep in there, and, and if, when we go for another bond, that we can put that in there and, and, and push for that. I'll be one of your big supporters on that. I promise you, I'll be one of your biggest supporters on that.
President Nahada, I got a question for Mr. Ayington. What's the cost of, of this package here?
Six million.
Sixty-five thousand six hundred and nineteen.
Sixty-five thousand six hundred and nineteen.
So about six million?
Mm-hmm.
And for the restrooms, what would be the, I think I already asked you this, right?
Yeah.
You discussed it last night.
I think I already asked you.
These are the, these auxiliary gyms are the most expensive construction costs in the district right now, more so than our high school.
You said it was two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars?
The first group was two-ninety-five. This one's two-seventy-five, if you did.
Ms. Nagara?
Mr. Gata?
Since I've been on the board since two thousand and ten, we passed two bonds. And uh, Mr. Morales, you're correct. We probably do need restrooms, but if you all recall, when we passed the bond in two thousand and eleven, not all the schools were able to get HVAC. So we waited, I believe, one of the schools was Science Middle School and Score Middle School, and I believe another school.
Clark.
Clark. So we waited till we had more money, we get another bond, and then those schools were able to, so they were, they were able to receive HVAC as well too, as well. So before we have the bond, before we do the bond, we have committee meetings, committee meetings, and we go out there to the public, and we ask everybody's information. So we've never set restrooms on these auxiliary gyms. Nobody's ever complained about it, so the public was worried about it. They voted for this bond. We passed the bond in two thousand and seven. It's promises made, promises kept. We have to keep what we, we promised everybody. And the reason why we expedite somebody's hours, not done with expediting them, that we wait too long, then it costs us more money. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ayington, one of the elementary schools, we waited, I believe, a couple, six months, and it cost us a significant amount of dollars.
That is correct.
Correct.
Why'd you wait?
We had to wait because some of the board members found mistaken. We had to do some changes, I believe. We waited, we, we didn't approve certain items. Every time we wait on certain items, there's a delay. So our promise.
So you're saying costs are gonna change from one month to another?
It's not just one month.
I'm just curious.
It's no change because either of the construction or the architect or engineering firm, something generally happens. In that case, for elementary school, I believe it was several months, and it was, and the amount was, it was a significant dollar amount. So yes, I agree, we're doing these only, uh, restrooms for auxiliary gyms, but we could wait for the next bond in a couple of years and go around that.
Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, without due respect to Mr. Gandera, I, I believe that the, in certain, in certain cases, I think uh, I mean, the first phase had been approved. Am I correct, Mr. Mr. Ayington?
Yes.
Has been done. It's all, it's gone, right?
Y'all approved.
It's been approved and ready. So we're just, we're just talking about these five particular campuses or, or these uh five schools. That, that's in question there, and like Mr. Garcia mentioned that if there, if there is any possibility for you to reconsider and look to see what we can do, and I mean, I don't want to be sarcastic, but we're eventually, if this goes through, we're eventually gonna have to get portable Johns outside these uh, these portables to help with, alleviate some of these issues that students have coming out of that multipurpose facility, and at, at least at Horizon Heights for that matter.
Okay.
Ms. Nagara?
Uh, excuse me, just a moment, please. As Mr. Gata stated, and, and Mr. Morales, you just brought up, the first phase of our auxiliary gyms has already been approved. It, it's, it's already going forward. We can't come back and make improvements to this package and/or the next package without doing it for the first package as well, and that's already been approved. We can't make changes to schools without making them to all of them, because it will come back and cost us much, much more in the long run. If, if this had been brought up during the first package, the first set of schools, we could have maybe looked at it. I honestly don't see how, because it will be an exorbitant amount of money, and from listening to Mr. Ayington last night, we're going to be short, and this, to add bathrooms, would just add more of a shortage. And these auxiliary gyms, as they are, is what we promised our community. Did someone else have?
Yes, Ms. Nagara. I just wanted to say something. I just wanted to say something. I did tour Vista del Sol recently, and I know the principal there, I usually ask, do you have any concerns or issues, and she did say, well, you know what, our teachers, we need, they need a bathroom, as far as storage facility. It is an old school, 37 years old. I feel that some of these older schools, or some of the older buildings, do need restroom facilities for the faculty and for the children. I'm in agreement there, as far as, you know, maybe doing something, not sure what, what it may be, but we, we do need to take care of our, of our aging schools, as far as facilities, the bathrooms, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, that's all I needed to say.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Gandera and a second by Mr. Gata. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
And the motion carries. Item 10, executive session. The meeting is to be closed for discussion with legal counsel to receive and discuss the recommendation of administration to terminate the term contract of RC teacher on special assignment at the District Service Center for Good Cause, dedication of real property to public entity for purpose that benefits the public interest of the district, to receive and discuss the parent grievances filed by Ellen S. Sander and P. Veretta, to discuss personnel and real estate matters, to consider administrative recommendations for assistant principal position at Jane A. Hambrik School, and employee health clinic nurse practitioner or physician assistant, under Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.082. The time is 7:31. Okay, we are back in session. The time is 8:19. We will continue with new business A, discussion and possible action regarding the recommendation of administration to terminate the term contract of RC teacher on special assignment at the District Service Center for Good Cause. Mr. Blanco?
Thank you, Board President Nahada, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. I gave you a summary of the recommendation and the reasons for the proposal to issue a notice to RC, a teacher who's currently on special assignment here at the District Service Center but holds a term contract. It's a recommendation of administration that the board authorize administration to issue appropriate notice to the teacher, advising him that his contract will be terminated for good cause, those reasons being the ones that I gave you in closed session.
Shall we move?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gata and a second by Ms. Rodriguez. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
And the motion carries. Item 11B? There's no action, okay. Item 11C, consider approval of administrative recommendations. Dr. Espinoza, first, we have assistant principal for Jane Hambrik School.
Yes, ma'am. President Nahada, members of the board, administration recommends Ms. Yvonne Romero to assume all the roles and responsibilities as a new assistant principal at Jane Hambrik.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Gata. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item C2, employee health clinic nurse practitioner?
Yes, President Nahada, members of the board, administration recommends Ms. Nidia Lopez to assume all the roles and responsibilities as a new physician assistant, nurse practitioner for the new employee health clinic.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Sorry, who was that?
I was. I was quick.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Minna. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. If there's no further business before this board, we are adjourned. The time is 8:21.